Good evening, welcome to the council meeting of January sixteenth. Anybody in attendance, any of you with some headphones, please raise your hand, we'll give those to you right away. If not, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the great government for which it stands, one nation under God, in this small, who is the rich and gentle.
Donna, can you do a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Blush.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Nisco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt. Councilmember Sterns. And Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Council having late changes to the agenda. Please manager.
Mr. Mayor, it's on your agenda, but it was added project. We had a well pump go out recently in Wellforce, so that has been added to your agenda. In a late manner, and we're asking for a waiver of three touch rule, so we can move forward to to get that project completed in a timely manner, so that'd be added to your agenda tonight.
Right, sounds good. Council, how many board reports to share? All right. If anyone had a chance to review the consent agenda, may have a motion to approve the agenda to publish. All right, we have a motion in the second to approve the agenda to publish, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. All right, so we have our first presentation is a promotion police corporals. Very exciting, council will rise. Audience will get on with that. The gentleman come up front.
And the lady.
Call you at us.
Yeah.
All right. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, say your name.
Hi, it's Sandra Gash.
Hi, I'm Eric Wiltio.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
Constitution of the State of Washington.
And to abide by the code of ethics of the Shelton Police Department. And I will faithfully and partially.
No, faithfully and partially.
Discharge of duties of police corporal of the City of Shelton.
Discharge of duties of the Whismer Road of the City of Shelton.
All right, congratulations.
Yeah.
And city manager, you have any comments?
I think I'll handle the chief, I want to thank you on behalf of my department though for taking leadership role with Shelton Police Department in your service. Up to this point and for the years to come, I know, you know, it's really valued amongst your, amongst your staff and the entire department, so. Hand it over to the chief at this point.
I just want to say congratulations to Corporal Tania and Corporal. Portillo, sorry. Both of them have been at the police department for several years and had. Sick of it, that growing with us, they're both officers in charge, were first line supervisors. And been training officers, had been training worse police officers over the past couple of years. They underwent significant testing for this position, we just didn't hand this out. There was, there was a multi base testing that was not even scored by us, it was scored by outside, outside agents, so we had nothing to do but to look at this. And put them, they were sort of top, top of the list and, and. Selected, so thank you so much. And then I have one more presentation.
Yeah, I think you're up the hot seat.
Yeah, you're up, I'm sitting these hot seats. So, like to introduce again Corporal Gary Portillo, who is our officer for the year. Every year, we ask for nominations from our police officers on who they feel is most deserving for this officer. And they give us up and have that new nominations, then we save for those and we compile it and we decide on the officer. This year, this officer, Eric Portillo. He is an eleven year law enforcement veteran, and he was hired by the Shelton Police Department in two thousand and twenty one. Prior to his employment in Shelton, he was a law enforcement officer for the Nevada Department of Public Safety and Tar County School District. While he's employed by those agencies, he was a probation officer, capital peace officer, school resource officer, he holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Since he was hired in two thousand and twenty one, he built a position of, he's built positions of officer in charge, field training officer, detective. Less than lethal weapons instructor, and now he is a corporal. In two thousand and twenty three, Gary is one of our top performers in statistics relating to calls responding to, reports written, and arrests made. He's also a field training officer for several of our new police officers, he's revered by his supervisors as professional, dependable, and a pleasure to work with. Also in two thousand and twenty three, we saw a huge increase in homicides and firearm related incidents involving the law and law and community. Gary's, Gary's critics experienced as a detective, coupled with him being bilingual, was integral to the investigation of these incidents. Gary is not currently a detective at the time of these incidences, but responded to them and assisted detectives with their investigation. Gary identified critical need that he needed to make a law enforcement in connection with law and law and community in Shelton. And he did so by volunteering his time to make these significant connections. He attended church mass with the law and law and community, community events, and he kept in touch with friends and family and friends and family and victims of these incidents. Not only is dedication to the department and the personnel, but been noticed by officers as dedication to the safety and the trust of the community, that's why our officer here is Corporal Gary Portillo.
Thanks, Judy.
Congratulations.
Right.
Thank you, guys.
Hey, our next presentation is from Finance Director Mike Giddens.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council, and tonight I'm presenting the November monthly financial report. I'm gonna keep comments pretty brief, because I think next month, when you're able to see the December financial report, it will have really even more relevant information. Because obviously, we know our ones were able to see what the fiscal year truly ends at. But at this writing for the November, this is ninety two percent of the year. So if everything were received as far as revenue and expenses, that's where those percentages would be, but we know not everything comes in in the equal avenue. But we'll look at a couple of areas here while we have the November financial statement in front of you. As a reminder, our fiscal year ends December thirty first, we keep the fiscal year open for twenty days. So up until January nineteenth this year, we're hosting really two check rounds. One for invoices that are twenty twenty four, and one for invoices that are dated in twenty twenty three. So essentially, they hit the twenty twenty three budget. And we'll do that through this week, and then we'll close twenty twenty three, anything that then comes in is paid out in twenty twenty four. So that's also why the numbers we're showing right now were what we knew as of November, but they'll change a bit as we close out the fiscal year. So, I guess I'd stress that mostly that the estimates for the general are where we stood in November, and it'll change. There's some change in the other funds, but it predominantly it's the general fund. So on page two of the report, the general fund revenue, that should be close to where the year end turns out to be, because we just won't make many changes to revenue. So property taxes by the end of November, November are largely received, you'll notice we're just under budget, which is what we want. We don't want to be over budget for property taxes, but we kind of want that sweet spot where we're not too far under. We want to, of course, collect on the levy and then whatever else comes in as far as prior years paid tax, unpaid taxes that are collected and that sort of thing. So that's looking really good, because that's one of our, one of our top revenue sources for the general fund. And then we're estimating that will be slightly over for sales tax, which is great considering just where the economy is, so that shows a robust year for us. And then, as I mentioned earlier, as I've made these presentations, our estimate and budget for business and occupation tax was showing that we'd be under, that's totally true. That one should stay right about where it is. So overall, we're estimating for the seat budget on the revenue, the general fund, by just over three hundred and forty thousand dollars, so that's something a little bit. On page three, our breakdown of expense categories provides for the general fund is where we are estimating for November. Again, things will change as we close the year, as of the November financial, we're estimating that expenses would be well under budget. So that'll change, but I fully expect us to stay there. Largely, I think you'll remember, a lot of the savings was due to jail costing, under where we estimated when we prepared the budget in the fall of two thousand and twenty two. And then probably most spectacular were those mid-year changes we made to the budget in mid-year of two thousand and twenty three. So, on page five, the comparison of general fund revenues and expenditures shows where we're at in the month of November compared to the prior fiscal years. And you'll notice that due to those reductions that I just mentioned, in careful management of our resources, our twenty twenty three expenses in the general fund are actually very close to twenty twenty one. So you'll see they were up in two thousand and twenty two, but they're really matching closely to the two fiscal years prior. Then on page six, we show a sales tax breakdown, and I just mentioned that since I highlighted that we're over in collections there. The top chart shows for all sales tax types received in two thousand and twenty three through November, and on the bottom chart, we're highlighting for the month of November. You'll notice it's pretty comparable for the City of Shelton in both presentations of that. Which really tells us a lot about the sales tax we get, it doesn't change a lot. It's probably not as volatile as some municipalities would see, we get that data directly from the Department of Revenue and they admit the receipts to us. And then starting on page eight through the end of the financial report is a citywide overview of revenues and expenditures. For each fund showing twenty twenty three budget, totals through November, and an estimated actual ending or end of variance budget. And I do want to remind you, as I started the presentation out, these estimates will change, particularly for the general fund. There'll be some changes in the water and capital, sewer capital funds, we made a large payment for some more of the automated meter supply parts just last week, so that'll draw that down a bit. But those will change, and we'll go over in a little bit more detail next month when we have the December.
I just want to thank you and city manager Mark Ziegler, your staff, and actually all department heads that made a lot of sacrifices to get this budget back in line. Six months ago, it wasn't looking so pretty, and now it's just looking pretty sustainable, you know, we've done a lot of hard work to get us here, and I'm, thank you. And city manager, thank you as well.
Appreciate that, Eric Howett. Has not necessarily solved a plaguing revenue problem paired with the costs of business to continue to rise. So while the, the work was done this fiscal year mid-period to right the ship, it won't survive next fiscal year, we'll be right back doing the exact same thing. So that's where I guess I'm at, is, so Mike, we're looking pretty good, starting off the fiscal year. Quick question on the twenty day window, what happens if it's twenty one days or twenty five days in its revenue? How does that get deposited after the twenty day fiscal cutoff for twenty twenty?
Then it will go into the fall of fiscal year, so.
So it would be counted as twenty twenty four revenue?
We really just leave that open for expenditures, primarily so that we can more accurately get the budget. You know, many of our consultants, they can't get us that invoice by the end of December, so it gives us time to process some of those in particular.
And to be as accurate as possible, I mean, those invoices instead of being mid-year or mid-December, we can get them to December thirty first and get, get them, get the expenditures as accurate as possible for the fiscal year.
Yeah, the other thing that's coming up soon, that'll show probably a little bit of anomaly on sales taxes, construction, we're heading into some well construction, so there'll be some purchases locally, I'm assuming on that, so we'll. Coming in see likely that, but when's the next major check-in period with you guys on budget, when are you thinking? When you'll know kind of how twenty four is.
I, I think we, we want to do one certainly first quarter, so I think probably, you know, sometime in March would probably be the best opportunity to bring up and come to a study session, so we can have a. You know, have, have an open dialogue and open conversation about where we lie, maybe affirm budget priorities from the council as well, so we can, we can make sure we're continuing, continually checking in with council and meeting your goals.
Perfect, yeah, now there's some new folks here, and we set the budget before, so this will be the check-in for that, so I know there's some thoughts or initiatives out there that might be looked at prior, guys, so. We'll look forward to March.
We certainly want to be consistent, if you will, this isn't a budget that should have a lot of supplementals throughout the year. That our goal is to hold our line, maintain our budget as efficiently and strictly as we can. Certainly, there's unknowns that will arise throughout the year, those will be appropriate to address in the supplemental, but we'll do those strategically. With all intent to have, have one supplemental, as you saw in two thousand and twenty three, we had two. And that may be very well the case at the end of two thousand and twenty four, but our intent is that we adhere to the adopted budget. We keep expenses in line with that, unless there's a, a change in, in revenue or a major change in expense that we were unforeseen. Then we'll be back in front of council for consideration.
I, I have to say, I'm, I'm not sure that we're going to be in the same spot next year as we were six months ago. The council here has made some very tough decisions on B and O tax, stormwater, sewer, and water rate. So I think that we, we have tackled the future so far.
Fair point.
I don't think that we're going to be in the same spot six months laying people off. I'm, I'm not sure that was quite fair, we, we made very, very, very tough decisions, or the previous council has made very tough decisions. That affect all the people and citizens of the City of Shelton and, and our city manager is also, and we've made some tough decisions as well, fair point, to get us. So we're not doing that six, so again, thank you. Any other comments or questions for Mark or Mike? All right, thank you, Mike. All right, we are now at city manager, Mark Ziegler has information for the committee and board of.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council. As you're aware, council members serve on boards and committees as established by the council itself, or maybe bylaws, or actually laws within local government to serve the interests of the. Of the council and the City of Shelton, you've been presented a list of these committees and boards. Some of the committees have had standing appointments over the years that I've heard back from council members, but also want to get new council members' interest on some of these committees and boards. There are some vacancies, and I'll just run through this real quickly and talk about potential interests here. Let's see, the first one was the Macecom Legislative and Governing Board, council membership. Schmidt expressed interest in stepping away from that, moving into two thousand and twenty four. Councilmember Gilmore, I think, has expressed interest, excuse me if I'm speaking out of turn, you can feel free to interrupt me. The left board, the Law Enforcement Officers and Firefighters Board, was created by a vacancy in the council member. I know councilmember Sterns has expressed some interest there. The Mason County Board of Health is vacant due to change in council members, and councilmember Gutierrez has expressed some interest in that. Board, the Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning Organization, we'll call it PRTPO for short. Councilmember Blush has expressed some interest in that. And then, as far as the external boards or committees, the opioid stakeholders group, that also became vacant. With the change of council, and I believe it's the one I didn't confirm, if councilmember Sherman, okay. Okay, so it doesn't meet your meeting schedule at this point? So I had one thirty PM on the second Wednesday, that was not, it was earlier, correct? Nine AM on, nine AM, the second Wednesdays?
Right.
Okay.
No one can grab it, I'll take it for now, but.
The other two internal or subcommittees, if you will, that were established in twenty three, were the Subcommittee on Homelessness Response and the Budget Subcommittee. We have two vacancies there if, if they, I guess if the interested parties, the interested council members, maintain those appointments from last year, and so that's open for discussion at this point. The homelessness response committee, we met as needed, it was usually every other week. Councilmember Sherman, councilmember Gutierrez, former councilmember McDowell served on that, we certainly can reestablish that as council C Spit, and then the, the subcommittee. And we had a subcommittee on budget and finance subcommittee that started meeting as, as we started formulation, just provided staff the opportunity to meet with three council members to get further direction prior to coming to the entire council, it was just more efficient process to essentially ensure, maintain that our meeting, meeting councils' goals and objectives and formulate a budget, so.
I'm fine staying on that, who else wants that, well, there's three of us who want that, but I'm fine staying on it.
Yeah, that was kind of ad needed, as needed, so we, we set the meetings as, as schedules allowed of individuals.
And so we need another percent of ways to make it work.
Anyone else want, could I, I'll give it up, and I'll take it.
Councilmember Schmidt, are you interested in maintaining that, or?
Yeah.
Okay, so it looks like I, I have interest from councilmember Gutierrez and councilmember Sherman.
That's fine.
With that subcommittee? So that'd be, that'd be four.
Oh, no, I'll, I'll back off.
Oh, okay, sorry, misunderstood you there, okay. All right, and then, I'm sorry, I'll go back to homelessness response, only councilmember Blush? Correct, and then to maintain, councilmember Sherman, councilmember Gutierrez?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Anything you want me to cover again, or? I'll, I'll run through the list again, don't mind, you can take notes, okay, please, okay. So we'll start at the top, the Economic Development Council, EDC is councilmember Schmidt. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee is Mayor Nisco. Mason County Criminal Justice Working Team is councilmember Sherman. The Macecom Legislative and Governing Board is councilmember Gilmore. The Law Enforcement and Firefighters Board is councilmember Sterns. Mason County Board of Health is councilmember Gutierrez. Mason County EMS and Trauma Council, councilmember Schmidt. Mason Transit Authority Board, the regular meeting and joint meeting, Mayor Nisco. The PRTPO, we'll narrow that down, councilmember Blush. The Opioid Stakeholders Meeting, councilmember Sterns. Mason County Housing, we have a Behavioral Health Advisory Board, we should have an acronym for that, is Mayor Nisco. The Shelton Memorial Park Board, councilmember Gutierrez, still good there? You all have the pleasure of serving on the Metropolitan Park District Board. And then our council, Subcommittee on Homeless Response is councilmember Sherman, Gutierrez, and Blush. And the Subcommittee for Budget and Finance, our councilmember Schmidt, Gutierrez, and Sherman. Make any mistakes, okay. I will, I'll memorialize this, clean up the copy, and make sure it's all forwarded to council. At this point, I'm just asking, I've asked to maintain three touch rule to place this on the action agenda for February sixth.
Are you in for that?
Yeah.
We just have that.
And this is going to place the council member board, any assignments on the February sixth, twenty twenty four action agenda?
Sure.
The motion is second to move this to the, what, I'm sorry?
February sixth.
February sixth, action agenda. And waiting the three touch rule.
That would include three touch rule, yeah, there was, tonight's the, yeah, sorry.
Do it again, we're good.
The motion was good.
All right. Hey, we're now, Project Manager Aaron Nix has information for about a vehicle purchase.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council, thank you, that's C team tonight, I apologize for that, but I have several items that I'll be discussing with you, this first one is relevant to a vehicle purchase by our water department. This was budgeted in the two thousand and twenty four budget by, by law, by our policies, anything over thirty thousand needs to come in front of the council, get approved. Typically used, in this particular instance, we use the state's contract producing of vehicles, we get much better rates and deals for that. Our intent here is to purchase a new three quarter town for pickup. The other three vehicles that these folks are using are on average nineteen years old, and they're two wheel drive, so the intent is to equip them with appropriate vehicles. We're finding that some of these smaller vehicles actually do pretty good in helping us with snow control as well. So, again, just wanted to bring this forward with the intent, and I don't, since, yeah. Just looking for a motion to put this on the action for the February, February sixth meeting, if you have any questions specifically about the vehicle, all the breakdowns within the supporting documents, that's. So, what were the questions going to be?
Donna, any type of public comment?
No, we don't.
Do we have a motion?
Like the resolution number one, create one pair of one to two degrees, the council, February, twenty twenty four, action agenda.
How many questions? The budgeted item, so we have a motion in the second to place resolution number one, three, one, zero, dash, one, two, two, three on the city council, February sixth, twenty twenty four, action for the consideration, all in favor say aye. Aye, post, motion carries. Next business item, Safe routes, school capital project manager Aaron Nix has details.
Thank you again, Mayor, this particular item is basically a constructional board for the safe routes for schools project that I have been talking about. Previous councils in this new council, we talked about it our last meeting, this is a project that is currently out of bid, we're having a bid opening on Thursday of this week at ten AM here at our offices. With the intent of moving forward with the Safe routes, the schools project, which are to watching, or the rapid response begins, there's actually going to be a total of three of them. It's the installation of them as well as additional work on the signage in these areas, and I talked to you a little bit about, there's another item on here that I'll go into greater detail about it. With the intent, and I've included all of the bid announcement, all those things, we're looking at a project range of eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred thousand to a million dollars. We'll see how it comes out, our, our current cost estimate is included in there, about eight hundred and fifty or so is what we're, we're projecting lease construction cost, that doesn't include design work and everything else that we've done. So my hope is that we can, at the next meeting, I will actually have a bid and something that we can award, and that's my intent. The intent is the three touch rule, the idea is we're just kind of bringing this to make it, bring it to your intention, we're out the bid right now with the, with the intent that we can award it at our February sixth meeting on the action agenda. Um, we can award it at our February sixth meeting on the action agenda. Are there any questions about that project? I know we detailed it pretty significantly at the last project, you're very familiar with it. Candidly, I think it's a very good project, and there's going to be more monies like this available in the future, um, which is good because. There's some other areas we want to address, as the mayor knows as well.
Thank you. Donna, anyone sign up for public comment?
No, Mister Mayor.
Mister Mayor, I moved to place resolution number one, nine, six, dash, one, zero, two, three on the action agenda. February sixth council meeting for further consideration.
All right, how much are your question? Up, how much are your questions?
So much a quiz for you, Aaron, but. We're we're adding a bunch of new flashing beacons around the city now, and I'm just wondering. Like the lifespan of these things, and then are we budgeting for the replacement? All that, I know we're getting the capital to install them. But you know, we're not really raising the budget to. Much more now, you know, so.
It's a very good question, um, I think in to answer, I will answer your question, I think to start, we're looking to maybe standardize, um, we've been working with the school district. The reality is is that, and candidly, we're putting them in, they're managing that as far as flashing times and those kind of. Little bit different with these flashing beacons, um, we have actually asked the school district whether they're interested in kind of partnering with us in that in that. Particular piece, I think the important part that we're understanding is the wireless piece to this, currently we have to do it via cable on all of them. These new ones are going to have be wireless integrated, so it's going to provide some efficiencies there. As far as that, no, we need to start doing stuff like that as far as depreciation and replacement. Um, the ones that we have are ten, fifteen years old, it's my understanding, they're pretty outdated. So if we can establish a, you know, that time period as far as lifetime cost recovery, yes, we need to do that, but no, we do not do that right now, it's thinking is.
It's not like it's an asset that goes status to stall that if it burns, you know, its lifespan burns out, not like we can't just. Not replace it, you know, so we'll have to. I'll be curious, like on lifespan. Is there kind of operate right, that solar panel and battery?
That's correct, and we're not, um, ten to fifteen years is what I've kind of said, heard as far as life expectancy in those things. Um, the ones that we have are still functioning well, um, it's just integration to L E D now, that's kind of where we're at, getting all of them kind of L E D retrofitted. Um, and the reality is the solar is awesome, especially with L E D, where the draw is much less, and it it really does. It works well, so that's a very good point, we need to start doing that, I think we need to do that with a lot of stuff as far as just replacement costs.
Yeah, or um asset. Management, management system, you know, as that has. Been integrated and kicked off and we we started put um, put in our systems. Uh, into that, um, we certainly can track things like this much uh much easier. And uh and build in those depreciations and build in those those lifespans in there rather than.
You have streets funded asset, right?
Be a streets funded asset, absolutely right, general fund. Yeah.
I just offer this because I have experience with this, you may, I you, I think you work for the state, um. There are some very good products out there, and I know we've kind of selected one to use, utilize for asset management, there are some really good ones out there. Um, Cartograph is a phenomenal product that I've used in several di- different jurisdictions that I've at. The benefit with that is it has a work order function, it also has, as these things are completed. You and you import that into the software and it basically gives you a life expectancy for each of those elements, meaning if you're. Proactively out maintaining it, you're going to see those those life expectancies. Move out significantly, so it's really good software, I I don't, I'm not sure about our current one, but I'm saying there are some really good products to help. In the future, we decided to go. Again, council, this is for the amendment, if you recall at the last meeting, we had discussion, we need, we wanted to include a little bit more design money. Candidly, most of that work's already done because we're going to bid, what we're trying to do is get this approved so that we can uh finish that.
Yeah, and. Aaron, can I, yeah, right, um, real quick, we didn't take a vote, yeah, exactly, so there was no council action. Uh, on E three, we haven't taken coun- council action on E three yet, and then you can move into F one.
So there were no other questions. We have a motion, the second to place resolution number one, two, nine, six, dash, one, zero, two, three on the action agenda for. On the February sixth council meeting, further consideration, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, now Aaron has information for us about a contract amendment for Safe Routes to School.
Thank you, Mayor, um, Council. Again, this is, this particular resolution is relevant to um that additional design work that we did on. It it just doesn't make sense to do work in an area and comprehensively not to look at the the signing plan there. What we found is A T C B stuff issues, so. The intent with this amendment is to actually finish that, get that work completed so that we can install new signs at the time of construction, again. We're going to be awarding this here shortly, uh, the bid opening is on Thursday, so I'm just looking for approval of this resolution so we can finish that.
Thank you, does anyone sign up for public comment?
No, Mister Mayor.
Reading the resolution number one, three, zero, eight, dash, one, two, two, three.
Resolution number one, three, zero, eight, dash, one, two, two, three. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve amendment number one to the contract for design services. Associated with the Safe Routes to School Crossing Projects.
Thank you, Donna, do we have a motion?
Mister Mayor, move to adopt resolution number one, three, zero, eight, dash, one, two, two, three as presented.
Right, comments or question?
Mister Mayor, I didn't catch the second on that, okay, thank you.
Right, we have motion, the second to adopt resolution number one, three, zero, eight, dash, one, two, two, three as presented, all in favor say aye. Aye, both, motion carries. Aaron has another one for us.
And another.
Another, oh.
It is, um. Council, we talked about this at your last council meeting, this is a grant acceptance. Um, for our angle site reservoir capacity upgrades uh that were received this year, or excuse me, last year. In the amount of one point eight five million dollars, um, and basically this is easy in the sense that. Wha- what I'm looking for is the grant uh for the the council to accept the grant money so that we can proceed. With design as well as getting structure done for that project. Any questions?
Or anyone with that public comment?
No, they haven't, Mister Mayor.
Reading the resolution number one, three, zero, nine, dash, one, two, two, three.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to accept grant funds in the amount of. One million eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for proposed improvements to the angle side pressure zone within the city of Shelton.
Thank you, Donna, do we have a motion?
In order to see something angle type pressure zone, water improvement as identified with the.
All right, comments or questions? We have a motion, the second to adopt resolution number one, three, zero, nine, dash, one, two, two, three, accepting grant funds from Washington State. Department of Commerce in order to fund the angle side pressure zone water improvements as identified within twenty twenty-four approved budget, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. I gotta say, that was a very large motion. Granted, today, I I said if we have to take four breaths for a motion, we need to shrink those.
If it's for one point eight million dollars, we'll, we'll, yeah, have a long motion, right?
All right, okay, now we're on our late action. Item to replace a well pump, well or pump.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Deputy Mayor, Council. Um, I, my preference would be not to bring emergency things like this to you, and we are taking steps. Candidly to help ensure at least from pump perspective, that hopefully we won't have to do this again, unfortunately. The timing is a bit, uh, it's actually, i- i- if there's a, there's silver lining in everything, unfortunately, we have a hit. In that we need to pay for a new pump and well number four. The a- a- and again, this is light, this is helpful to help compensate. You as far as making the decision for this, um, this particular pump. We're kind of grateful it went out now as opposed to in a month. Um, as you guys remember, we awarded the well number one uh project, that's slated to start on February nineteenth. Our intent here, and I don't know how much you folks know about our water system, we actually have three. Active working wells at this point, we have two now because one of the pumps are bad. We need to leave, have two wells pumping and containing all the time in order to have consistent good water flow, so. If we were to have lost the well number four during the construction of well number one, we would have been in a a world of hurt trying to supply water. What we, what we like to do um is, um, and once we found out, we did have a a group go in and and take a look at the pump. What they found out and realized is the motor's bad, um, and it needs to be replaced. So what you have before you is a quote, uh, we went out and got bids for this. This particular company can turn it around in ten days once they've been given approval, so. That was really helpful for us, just because we need to get that up and functioning so that we can. Put down well number one in order to construct the other improvements that we're doing um there, so. Unfortunately, um, and I don't like doing this either, we're we're requesting that council please consider waiving the three-touch rule in this particular instance. Because we got to turn it around, we got to get it installed, um, for that very reason. In the future, and I've talked to Jay often about this, um, and everyone, we are going to look to be a little bit more proactive with these. These things, um, typically in other places I've worked at, such that I was general manager at Cushman, we would pull these pumps every five years or so. Rewind them just to make sure that we need to get on a plan like that, that that would help us, because again, I don't want to come and. Mercy situation and continually ask for, got to fix this pump, the intent is to just be more proactive and not have that happen. The other thing that I want to make the council aware is that we intend to take the old pump that's failed and rebuild it. So that we can put it on a shelf and if it's critical and we need it in a pinch, we'll have another one. So that's really the intent here with this particular piece, I know it's a big ask, seventy K or so. Um, I have talked with uh Mike, um, as well as Jay, and we do have water reserves in order to. Draw from in order to replace this pump, so what I'm asking is I'm hoping the council will pass this tonight for us so that we can. Get going on getting that pump replaced at well number four.
Thank you, Aaron, Donna, anyone sign up for public comment?
No, Mister Mayor.
Ever reading resolution number one, three, one, two, dash, zero, one, two, four.
Resolution number one, three, one, two, dash, zero, one, two, four. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve a public works contract. With American Pump and Drilling for completion of the well for pump replacement project.
Thank you, Donna, do we have a motion?
Mister Mayor, I move to waive the three-touch rule and adopt resolution number one, three, one, two, dash, zero, one, two, four, as presented.
All right, comments or questions?
Pump is thirty thousand bucks, but this thing is like four hundred and five feet underground.
Actually, close to seven hundred feet.
Well depth, but. Yeah, correct, I understand, that's better, uh, why it's so expensive, because it's really hard on the ground. Right, and complicated operation, and I think we're replacing a valve as well, without it, it's not cheap either. I agree, uh, having a preventive urban reservation program on.
Thank you.
Mister Nix, thank you and for your and for the speed and also for thinking about the future and trying to reuse the parts that we. Um, want to, you know, who might use in the future, I'm always in favor of increasing the quantity of water and the quality of water for the city, so thank you very much.
Totally, thank you, it's a honor to be working for you guys.
I just wanted to say thank you, I want to say that we rebuilt well four pump uh two years ago.
I think fifteen.
Newly installed in two thousand fifteen is the data that I have.
Yeah.
Okay, then I was sitting out there. Listening to it.
Good memory.
But I remember well four and then well one, we also did some work on well one as well.
Yeah.
Clean the pipe and.
Yeah, I think we, I think we actually lifted the the well, the pump a little bit, um, yeah.
Well, it's very important and sometimes things happen for a reason, and this happened for a reason, um, I would have hated to see this happen next month when you have a well, another well down, so uh.
Or in August, frankly.
Or in August.
It's never a good time, there's, there's better times than others, so, yeah, it's nice that we have the contract and it's, it's nimble enough to. To jump on the project and get that work complete.
And again, great idea to use the, use the old pump, rebuild it for something to pump for the shelf, you know, um, I think we've. Over the last few years, we've done a lot of redundancy in our, a lot of our systems, uh, computer systems, and we did the double U V lights, so. Okay, so, you know, we have that, we got better generators in case the power goes out during a huge rain event, so we don't dump sledge into the bay. You know, so um redundancy is great, I mean, I wouldn't be upset if we bought another pump, new pump to put on the shelf, I mean, if they're all the same.
Yeah.
You know.
They aren't, that's the part of the problem is their size specifically to the well, so that that's the issue, this is a bigger pump than what we have in the other ones.
Got it, so that's true, doesn't last very long though, because well, one pump was like twenty years old or something.
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately.
Unfortunately, that is, that is, the short is typically how you need to plan as a water purveyor, unfortunately. You'd be very lucky to get it in the last few years, I mean, I get it, I understand, it does, but um. You don't want emergencies happening, I mean, it's, it's difficult, especially if we can't supply our citizens water.
We definitely want to supply water to our citizens. Thank you, anybody else have any other questions?
I I do have a question, um, you mentioned, you mentioned that there's some water reserve budget wise, but. Would this erase that or just take a big chunk out of it?
It would not erase it, yeah, I think that we'd have to look back at the, at the, I think Michael, Mike would have it in this, in this report at this point.
We're estimating two point five, over two point five million.
Yeah, I think we're safe, um, our hope is that we wouldn't have to go into the reserve, that we would, we would maintain our expenditures appropriately to to absorb this within. Um, our operating costs, but being it's January sixteen, it's really hard to tell if we're going to be able to do that, so. Um, we will maintain that within our operating costs, and then if we do have to adjust the water budget, like I said. One time closer to the end of the year in a supplemental, we'll certainly do that.
You were talking storage, not.
I was talking.
No. Fund balance, yeah. Yeah, our fund balance is, sexually is, is sixteen percent of the operating costs for utilities.
Our strategic reserve.
Strategic reserve, sorry. Yeah, twenty percent regenerative. Yeah, so we are maintaining that, that sixteen percent of the operating budget.
We have a motion, the second to waive the three-touch rule and adopt resolution number one, three, one, two, dash, one, or zero, one, two, four presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Mark, you have seen the report for tonight.
You know, a couple things, um. There's some impending weather, we don't know what's going to happen uh tonight, but I just wanted to uh let council know, let the public know, um. We've got crews, you know, on standby, ready to come out if if maybe, they've done some pre-treatment to the, to the roads. Um, in in case i- in a freezing rain scenario, eh, you know, that. The, I guess, it isn't always, you know, it doesn't always work immensely, but um. We're also start our, start our crews fairly early in the morning so they can get in, check out the roads before the morning commute and take any precautions. Um, that are needed at that point, so we'll continue monitoring that, um, our public works crews. You know, monitored everything all weekend, thankfully enough, we didn't get really much precipitation at all, the the streets held up really well. Um, we have had some calls about some frozen pipes in the community, um, that will probably occur more often now that. We're getting some thaw. Within, within the community, so um. Individuals, business owners, property owners can call um the city during our regular business hours. Or the non-emergency line four, two, six, four, 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 one at Mesa Com, and they'll dispatch out. Um, for our public work crews, they'll get out there and turn off the water as quickly as as they can, we encourage people not to turn off their waters at their. At their meters, if they break something or something goes afoul, um, they could be uh responsible for that damage, so. Uh, we'll, uh, we'll respond to those as quickly and as efficiently as we can, we've got extra staff. Um, that are able to uh jump on those as they can over the next day or two as well, so we hope, hopefully. Um, it's just precautionary and we don't have a whole lot of uh damage in the community, but we'll, we'll maintain that. The only thing we're monitoring is um the freeze thaw and any uh road closures that might occur, uh, when you have. There's these heavy deep. There's these heavy deep freezes underneath the road section, it'll it'll freeze, you know, and it'll kind of heave and then it thaws out and you get. You know, you get unstable road base in these old roads. If you drive over those. It can basically just pump the mud up and break break apart the asphalt as well. So we'll keep an eye on on that and there may be maybe some road closures. This week if if we, you know, if it's a warrant to reduce. Heavy vehicles on on some of our local roads. So. That's all I have tonight for you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments for the city manager? At this time, the members of the public are invited to make public comment on any topic that's not listed on the agenda. Donna, do we have anybody? Signed up to make general public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Thomas Wolfe.
Hello, City Council Mayor. I came here today so that I could talk to you about the homeless issue, which is pretty pressing. I do not agree with spending more money to house homeless because it enables them and it allows them the opportunity to do nothing for themselves, which in the long run only hurts us. And cost more money. So what I have done is I have created a proposal and project idea and I've actually done all the work for you. The only thing that's missing from there is I need to talk to the local sheriff and see how we can enforce the policies. And I was hoping that in collaboration with y'all, we could work with the police to enforce policies that. Help us protect our community from dangerous unwelcome individuals that are streamlining into our community in a huge influx. If you further increase the cost for dealing with these individuals. They will take it upon themselves to take advantage of all of us, further costing us more money. So I'd like for us to. I'd like for us to facilitate a homeless address. I want to do background checks for these individuals. I have created a. Pretty detailed plan for y'all, including business incentives for local businesses. We have business incentives, the tax cuts for Walmart and other places like that. But we need them for our local, our local businesses, our family run businesses, the bedrock of our community. So we can incentivize them to take part in this as well. We, if to kind of explain to you the seriousness of this per individual homelessness, it's about thirty thousand dollars a year to deal with. Per individual. So that means that we have what? The last one is like three hundred and eighty seven. The lady told us we have about three hundred and eighty seven homeless people here now, but if you increase the beds. That that number is going to skyrocket. And so we're looking at thirty thousand dollars per homeless and we're not even accounting for the fact that if we have to incarcerate them. Or give them asylum and because they're mentally ill, that's going to cost us a lot more money. And it puts no money back into the community, which is a serious problem. It's a degradation of our entire community. It hurts us long term and it provides. It cycles no money back into our community. So what we should be focused on, on the individuals that actually want help. Want to get off the streets and are willing to go through the background checks and the drug test to get there to. To have an address that they can actually put on paperwork, to have a stable environment and seek the help that they need so that they can become decent. Well rounded individuals in our community and give back because if they have a job and they're spending money locally, they're also putting more money back into the community, which helps us long term. It this is an actual solution to the homeless problem. And if we focus on it together and collaborate, we can make this sustainable and we can help our community. For many, many years to come. This will not be a problem in the future if we do this.
Our next speaker is Kathy McDowell.
Mayor and deputy mayor and council members and Kathy McDowell within city limits. I have another project that I was working on. As I stepped out of office and that is called the Blue Star Family Flags. I don't know if any of you are familiar with those. But that was something that the Lions Club and the veterans wanted to work on together with the city, the blessing from the city. The city would need to decide where these flights would be the best on. They're a blue star. They're a flag with the. Blue star on it. It's the family name of a person in the armed forces that's here and. In the United States or deployed abroad. They hang up. So we're giving honor to the families. And then we don't like this part, but if that person is killed in action. Then it's changed to a gold star family flag. Money has been raised before and we're willing to do a fundraiser to, we're not sure how much. How many we have, how many people we have to fill these slots, but. We're going to be finding that out from the veterans and I just would like the blessing from the city council. And manager to step forward and help in any way possible. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dean Jewett.
Good evening, Long Wasing County President. I want to hit my three hot button topic. Some of you that are new to the board maybe don't know these or understand them. Some of you have heard me talk about them prior. Seventy percent of the negative impact downtown, I believe, could be cleared up by taking care of these three small, simple items. Enforcement of our anti-street camping ordinance that we passed that we do not enforce. How many people know about the blue and white van that sits over at Safeway that discharges its fluid into the parking lot? Been around for about a year. How about the white car that parks at Mason Transit or over by Proville? And continues to do, they they cook on the back of their car. They were parked underneath the pump station on Front Street. Everywhere they go, they leave garbage. Every single place. That car's been around for a year, year and a half. So, you know, that's a simple one. It's already, we already passed the ordinance. Let's enforce it. The the past and enforced a no lay lie ordinance, okay? Pull up Aberdeen. Pull up some of these communities, Spokane, that have passed these. Everybody says, well, we can't do it without a mitigation site. Absolutely, we can. You do not need a mitigation site to enforce a no lay lie ordinance. It doesn't have to be the whole twenty four hours. What you do is you pick an area and it's from a timeframe. Okay, they cannot be there in that timeframe causing a negative behavior. Everybody sees it. Anybody that goes downtown sees it. The next one is passing and enforcing a shopping cart ordinance. Look up Lakewood. Okay. Shopping carts. How long does a shopping cart have to impede the flow of pedestrian traffic before it becomes an issue? Because there's three or four of them sitting on the sidewalk by Safeway that have been there for weeks and weeks. You know, at one time there was an individual in town that collected over a hundred carts. How is that? I mean, that's really almost insane. Okay, and to do nothing about it, that is even more insane. Our street population, as our first speaker has talked about, has increased significantly. Well, in that four hundred range, are they Mason County residents that lost their jobs? Or are they people that have came from other areas? I think we all know the answer to that one. What kind of negative and or positive behavior do they create in our in our community? We had a fire at Brewer Park where a police officer had to go and respond to it and then he was attacked by an individual. And how many, how many times has there already been fires on a Brewer Park? Why is that even allowed to? So, wish I had about nineteen minutes, but I don't. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, we have one person on Zoom and that's Colleen Carmichael.
Good evening, Mayor Nesko, Deputy Mayor Schmidt and Vice and Councilmembers. I was going to talk on another topic tonight, but I thought important to address some of the comments made. Facts are very important when you're talking about the homeless. And I encourage all of you to look at the National Alliance to End Homelessness because there is actual data, proven data. That states that it is thirty five thousand dollars per year to keep someone on the streets. It is thirty one thousand dollars per year to criminalize an individual and it's fifteen thousand dollars a year to house people. There is no data to support the fear and myth that if you provide services, it will increase the number of homeless. In fact, the data states that if you offer services, it reduces the amount of people in homelessness. And the reason that the increase in homelessness continues has more to do with poverty and more to do with lack of affordable housing. Than it does the people who are on the streets. So if anyone in the community would like to know about the data. And about the statistical information that supports that, you should be speaking directly with any of the service providers in your town. Who do the work of homeless services and who have the information because we have to report it. To government entities because of the funding. So I encourage you to please not listen to fear. And instead, look for yourself for data that is verifiable and is available to anyone in the public who is interested in looking at that. I appreciate your time tonight and hope next city council meeting, I'll be able to talk. To subject that I wanted to speak about tonight, which is addiction and the stigma that goes with addiction. And how that is actually causing more addiction than it is reversing the trend, which is to try and help people. Get the stabilization and the information that they need to support them in their addiction, which is a medical condition. And not a moral failing of the person who is involved with drug use. So I encourage you again to talk to medical providers. Talk to any of the addiction providers in town and they will tell you the same thing that I am telling you. And I encourage you to please look at facts and not listen to fear. Thank you.
I keep calling.
That's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
The council have any new questions tonight?
Let's get one. There are some more topics. Just wanted to call attention with the head. We got two study sessions that I know we've been waiting to talk about for a long time. Just wanted to just remind everybody. So the first one up is going to be comp planning, which may sound like a dry and boring topic, but. It's not. It's actually very, very important. It's the plan for Shelton's roadmap for the future growth and all that. And then public safety is a huge one. So. Yeah, we've been talking about public safety for a long time and this will be the first kind of open public. Working session with it. So looking forward to that here in February first, too. So I think it's probably good for us to get our thoughts together and get them to Mark if we got questions, right? So we can be productive in those conversations, but big topics and definitely looking forward to the.
Yeah, absolutely. Appreciate that, Deputy Mayor. These these study sessions are meant to be, you know, much more interactive than these regular meetings. We want to provide the council as much information as we can. So if we know any particular. Topic, subtopic within these agenda items beforehand, we're happy to kind of provide more. Information because we want to be as thorough as we can and happy to provide. As much detail as possible so you can become as informed as possible and give us as much direction. That's that's. The forum for us to have that direction in moving forward with any with any initiatives that you feel is important.
Right. Our next meeting is Tuesday, February sixth, one point four, six P M. We all have today's session, January twenty thirty, six P M. This meeting is adjourned at seven oh three P M.